I'd like to call the December meeting of the Canfield Board of Education. Order please. This is a very special moment for me. It's my last one as President. Maybe I'll try to get it in a few years, but I'm very happy actually celebrating this moment. So. Excuse me? You didn't get that. I'd like a roll call please, Mrs. Kestner.
We're going to vote on that?
No. There was none of motion.
Okay.
Mr. Wilson, President.
I am here.
Mr. Frye, Vice President.
Here.
Mr. Boba.
Here.
Mr. Kestner. Mrs. Stern, President.
Join us in the pledge to the flag back in that corner.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving forth, Mr. Jordan, start it off with you.
Very, very happy to welcome somebody from Columbus. They don't make the trek up here very often. We have to go down there several times a year and it's good to see they're actually coming north on 71 instead of us heading south. Yolande Berger is here from the Ohio Department of Education and we have some high school staff in the audience tonight because we are definitely very thrilled and excited to recognize the high school for not only their participation in the AP offerings that they have had over the past several years, but a little special honor tonight. And we talk about student honor roll. Today, we're going to recognize staff honor roll. And we'd like to turn it over to Yolande and welcome her to Canfield.
Thank you, thank you. Well, indeed, it's a pleasure to be here this evening and, Board President, I'm sure that you are quite excited. This is a way to go out on a note like this, recognizing the accomplishments of your teachers here in the district, particularly those at the high school who are making AP a priority. And so I'm happy to report that the College Board has awarded Canfield School District with a distinction of honor roll, an honor roll participant. And what that means is that in addition to improving in areas of performance, you're also improving in areas of participation. And that is wonderful. And I am so excited because I've been working hand in hand with John Tulio and it has been a pleasure to work with the staff and what they're doing at the high school in the areas of AP. I'd like to read the letter that Superintendent Ross and I have drafted for you. Please accept our congratulations on Canfield Local Schools being named to the College Board's Fourth Annual AP District Honor Roll. To receive this distinction, a district must have increased its students' access to AP courses while at the same time maintaining or increasing the percentage of students earning scores of three or higher on AP exams. We do admire and appreciate schools that care about students of every ability, level and nature, and challenge those students wherever they are. In this case, by identifying motivated academically prepared students and providing high-quality AP instruction, your district is helping to make sure that promising young students are equipped to make the most of their college studies, careers, and lives. Please enclose or accept this enclosed certificate on recognition from the Ohio Department of Education and myself. I'd like to ask the teachers to stand and I want to personally congratulate, if you could come up front please, AP teachers. Mr. Tulio, please, and let's give them a round of applause. Thank you so much for your commitment. As a former AP English Language teacher, I know it's a lot of hard work and your dedication is really showing here as a result of being able to say that you are one of 30 that are here in Ohio that have received this distinction. So, thank you so much on behalf of Superintendent Ross and myself. Congratulations and keep doing what you're doing. All right, thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Superintendent Jordan, if I can have you come up please?
Sure.
I can give you this. This is the wonderful certificate here. All right.
Thank you very much.
And here is the certificate.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right.
Now, we can call Dr. Ross and let him know about the straight A grant. We talked to Yolande at supper and we'll make that call. Yolande, you are welcome to leave. I know you have to go back to Columbus. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. All right.
Appreciate it. We'll see you this time next year.
Thank you for joining. Thanks for making the trip.
Thanks, ladies. John, please.
No, it's truly an honor. I'd also like to recognize upon being here this evening as one of our staff members. The time of this time of year is very difficult with so many things going on. There's some other staff members that would have liked to have been here. This award really is for AP. However, it's just not our AP teachers, it's the entire staff at the high school. And when you look at it, it's the middle school, it's the elementary schools. We all share in this honor today. It's a great day for Canfield to be honored. She said 30 high schools in the state of Ohio. Actually, it's one out of 477 across the United States and Canada to be honored. So, for Ohio to have 30, that speaks volumes about the progress Ohio is making as far as reaching out and raising bar in the classroom. It's truly an honor. So, again, I'd like to, and Mike, we both like to personally thank our teachers for all of the hard work that you do every day for our students. Thank you.
Do we have a news release of some sort that will go out on this celebrating our success?
Actually, we are. And Friday, Mr. Tulio, Mr. Moldavon, and staff and students are going to be interviewed for television channels on Friday. So, look for that.
Great. Thank you very much to everybody. That's wonderful. I know that the three of us, I don't speak for Adrian, but the three of us could never pass the courses you're teaching. So, thank you for waiting long enough.
I know, they were quoting me at that effort.
Mr. Boba could have passed those courses. He could have passed those courses.
But only chemistry.
They touch students' lives. I mean, Mr. Pennington can let you know, we were just at dinner tonight and students are continually still coming up to you folks and thanking you. Holiday time is an opportunity for them to come home for the holidays with family and I'm sure you're getting visitors every day in the school. Sometimes, it's a strain on the day and it's tough to interrupt for instruction, but those kids really appreciate what you do and they recognize your efforts and they thank you for all of that. And I'm sure their families do as well. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Jordan, not to slight anyone here, but I must say that my young freshman son of college called home and asked me to personally thank Ms. Specko because I think he pulled out an A in U.S. History II. And there's only one reason, because you drilled him last year. And you said, maybe you need to back off? Do not back off, believe me. So, he will thank you upon his arrival, I'm sure. Would you like to continue with your presentation?
I would. And Brian's not here, but Adrian is here. Board members have a duty and a job in front of them that is not at all recognized enough. They take time out of the day, they take time out of the month, year, and in Adrian's case, eight years worth away from the family, dedicated to the school system. Brian, the same amount of time. And we'll definitely like to recognize him when he gets in here. But Adrian, we really like to recognize you, the time that you've given the school system and how many students and staff because of it. We thank you for your eight years. We hope you don't go away and not show your face from us anymore. We want your input, we need your input, and we just have a small token of our appreciation for the time you've given the school system and the entire community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
It's funny.
Excuse me, before you start.
Thank you. It's funny, I was thinking about tonight and I can remember how nervous I felt first coordinating. I really, truly was, and I feel almost equally as nervous tonight, which is kind of ironic. But, so I did put some thoughts together I'd like to share. It really has been my highest honor to serve the students of Canfield Local School District for eight years. I sincerely thank the community for allowing me this privilege to serve such a great school district. I have felt next to the pride naturally any mother feels for their child when they're successful, no greater pride have I felt than when I have the pride that I feel when teachers are awarded, such as they were tonight, when the students are high achieving, and the pride of serving this district. It has been truly an honor. I additionally thank the students, the parents, and the community members and the staff members who worked very hard to achieve the recognition of being an excellent school district for 13 years in a row and as we know, we continue to be today. Our shared vision and our dedication to the students of Canfield have always been the focus of our work. It's the hard work of the many before us who built the school district we reap the benefits of every day today. And I would like to thank them and I ask that we not forget them. As we move forward, I hope all of us will, as I will, remember to honor the past and to embrace the future of our high-performance students. Each of us know that we value education in our community and this is the true legacy for our children. No matter where life may take one in the future, no one can take one's education away from them. I am grateful for the opportunity to serve the Canfield Local Schools, to work with excellent administrative staff, both past and present, to serve on the Northeast Ohio School Board Association Executive Council, the National School Board Federal Relations Network, which provided me the opportunity to work with federal legislators. I strongly encourage others to seek not only the opportunity to serve their school board and on a local level, but to grow and to serve their district on a state and/or national level, to learn and to grow. I assure that in doing so, you too will find it both a worthy and humbling experience as I have. Again, I am grateful for the opportunity, all the experiences, and the countless, and I mean countless, wonderful people I have met locally, statewide, and nationally. I will cherish all the good memories and I thank all of you.
I want to thank you. You have been a tremendous mentor to me. I couldn't be as good as I am today without your help.
I don't know if I want that credit.
You can be humble, that's all right. We'll get somebody out here later.
He dishes it out, but he ought to be able to take it.
But thank you, thank you so much. I knew you've impacted not just here, but definitely the presentations in Columbus OSBA and everything that goes with it.
It will be nice.
Now, special assignment, we're going to have to have you go after Senator Shaboni and get us more money, so we'll work on that.
I can work on that.
Okay, thank you. Let's move to principals reports. Do we have any elementary school principals present? Are there one or two of you? I can't see. Oh, okay. Would you like to start?
I'll start us off today. Holiday season is upon us and our fourth grade students have already performed at the Lighting of the Green on December 6th, so they teamed up with some of the middle school students as well to put on that performance for everybody. We had our holiday workshops last week where the kids could come in and purchase gifts for loved ones. This is the first time that we brought that back. In previous years, they've been using artwork and parents have been purchasing various items with their artwork on it. Moving back to the holiday workshop, the kids were excited and thrilled to be able to go in and pick out those special gifts. I remember personally, I used to get my dad a little mini tool set every single year that I went through here, so good memories. But that being said, we are also hosting our holiday parties on this Friday. All board members are welcome to come on in and attend. We're going to have them from 2:15 to 3:15, so you can swing through if you would like to and see all the kids enjoying their parties. Mr. Fay and the building leadership team also teamed up and they're going to be putting on a sing-along assembly for all of our students on Friday as well. In addition to that, Mr. Fay's been playing the tuba for students every day as they've been exiting the building, and he's also going to go around during those parties and play some music for them as well. So, spreading holiday cheer throughout. The Handels Coins for Kids campaign, we raised at CH Campbell over $1,800 for Akron Children's Hospital of Mahoning Valley. And although I believe Hilltop did end up beating us in that one, it's nice to raise money for a good cause. Moving on from there, we also have the Toys for Todds collection bins out in our office lobby as well, and a lot of parents and children actually brought in gifts and put those in there for local children indeed. Moving on to some student recognition, our fall OAA scores came in and those OAAs that are given in the fall to our third graders, they are based on third grade skills that they should have by the end of their third grade year. So, it's really a free test to see where they're at before they take the real test at the end of the year, the one that counts for our report card and everything else. With that, we have a 73% proficiency rate among all the students at CH Campbell and 26% of our students scored advanced and 20% scored accelerated. And that's really a testament to all of the hard work that our lower-level grade-level teachers, K through 2, put in to prepare our students for third grade. So, they did an excellent job on that. I look forward to seeing the results that are going to come from the spring assessment as well. With staff development, we've had quite a few different staff professional development opportunities offered. During our waiver day, Carol Young, our district literacy coach, provided all of our teachers with training on guided reading and has been training them as well throughout all of our Common Plan meetings throughout the month. In addition to that, they were given some training on DRUND, the new social media application that a lot of our teachers will begin using in the new year. K-1 teachers got more training on the characteristics of leveled books, so they understand what a leveled book looks like for the students that they're going to end up teaching and they'll know what books they should be reading at, at their level. Second grade teachers were working on their standards-based report card that we would like to have implemented by next year. And grades 3 to 4 teachers received training from Turning Technologies on the interactive response clickers. And that's all I have for everybody. Happy holidays and enjoy that winter, friend. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Tulio?
The teachers need to go home and prepare lessons for tomorrow.
Okay. If you're free to send us a copy tonight after you're done.
If you look on site, go to their webpage, you'll find your lessons.
Right now, just go ahead. Will I ask his permission?
They're just fighting it out back there. I'm going to wait until that's over. Travis and I talked before the meeting, we're going to start coordinating what we say so we don't say the same things to each other. Third grade report card came, or the results from the OAA, fall OAA came out, 73% passed at Hilltop, too. Outstanding job by our lower-level teachers to get our third graders ready to take that test at the beginning of the year. Again, those students who are below proficient, we're going to work with them, get them the proper intervention, and we want to really see our scores go up in the spring. Coins for Kids, I told you I'm going to mortgage my house to make sure we won that. We raised over $2,000 at Hilltop Elementary School. That's about $2,000 more than we raised last year. I'm pretty hopeful that we're going to win the ice cream party and when we do, I will let board members know and I will take requests as to your favorite ice cream, so.
Yeah, when you let me know about the party the last time that there was no.
There was no, I know, I know, I know. Now, the middle school's going to throw out.
I'm trying to tenure, boy, I get that.
You can't, absolutely, absolutely.
Don't do it.
The middle school's going to throw some outlandish number out there, but you've got to remember they've got double the stews that we have. And if you take what Hilltop, if you take what Hilltop and CH raised together, we still beat what the middle school brings with double the stews.
You have to divide yours in half, don't you? I'm sorry, you have to divide yours in half.
Okay, so if you divide it in half, then they should be lower than us.
They're still lower than us.
It's difficult for motivating.
They're still lower than Travis and I to get on the race, more than the middle school, you know, with our cute little elementary students. Our second grade students sang at the Lighting of the Green. I want to thank Mr. Scourge for his cooperation with the Rotary on that. Our limo lunch was held on December 11, 2013 for our top seller in our fall fundraiser. We went to Golden Corral. That's all I'm going to say about that. Our kids loaded up on foods that you normally, when kids load up during the school day. They had some sugar highs in the afternoon coming back. Yesterday was our second grade holiday program, three shows. We had one at 10, one at 2, and the last night, seven pool houses at all three programs, and our kids just did an amazing job. Very, very well done for second graders, very proud of them. Our PTO-sponsored parties will be held this Friday, December 20th, same times, 2:15 to 3:15. You'll go to CH, come to Hilltop. We will have caroling by our students throughout the day in the main entrance, so you may stop in and hear them sing throughout the day. Some upcoming events, we are obviously all looking forward to our winter break starting Friday, and then the big event in January is our Dinner with Dad, which will take place on January 23rd. Want to thank personally and on behalf of the Hilltop staff and students, want to thank Mr. Kestner and Mrs. Stern for their service to Canfield Schools and particularly the support they've shown me over the three years I've been here. And lastly, happy holidays from Hilltop Elementary School.
Thank you. All right, come out with the number first.
Oh, no, I'm going to save that for the end. Your own roll, please. Building management and staff, our middle school staff was provided with in services in November on incorporating Google Docs into their classrooms, and there's a lot of tools available with that, which we're excited about. Eric Petrow is one of our gifted teachers and she actually led that for the staff. On waiver day, teachers who are well versed in Lightning Grader, which is how we collect data and analyze that formatively and summatively as well, they were able to sign up for more in-depth training in Google Docs implementation. And the staff was also trained in the rollout, the initial rollout of DRUND, which we will be hearing more about. We do have a plan for that rollout, but our staff was exposed to that. And just as Travis alluded to, that's our social media that we're going to be using as our internal Canfield community. Day holder communication, again, we've been sending the e-newsletter out weekly. We, the last one was a double edition, so we're going to do another one the first week in January. Parent-teacher conferences were well attended. We had great conversation, we had coffee with the principal. We're going to be reaching out to our regular parents who have been showing up to that and we're trying to recruit more people to come and ask questions and engage in some two-way communication. The communication committee will meet in late January to discuss moving forward with our initiatives after we initially implement DRUND. We want to gather some data on how we're using that, the way we're using that the most effectively, and then we're going to start looking at how to revamp our website and make that as productive as possible.
Okay, I'm having a hard time containing myself, so I really want to tell you the numbers first because it's crazy, but I'll try. On waiver day, our teachers, much like Joe and Travis, were trained in balanced literacy, all of our English Language Arts and Social Studies teachers. And that excites me particularly because it's the first time in a year and a half that I've been here that I've heard that we're doing the same thing in the middle schools and elementary. So, I think it's certainly proof that we're aligning not only horizontally at the grade level, but vertically among grade levels. That's a great thing. And balanced literacy, just to talk a little bit more about it, and guided reading. Guided reading is a component of a balanced literacy program and it allows teachers to determine instructional levels, so the kids can be taught at their own level, but also levels where students can read at their own leisure, which is really, really important to get kids reading on their own. The special education Christmas party was beautiful. The kids had a great time. I think the adults had as much, if not more, fun than the kids, but it was very, very nicely done. And I put a shout-out into John and Josie for organizing that for the kids. We have a middle school robotics club. It's new this year. Lori Halli volunteered to head that up and they were called the Circuit 30s. They had their first Lego competition in Gerard, and at this point, it was just them showing up and figuring out what to do, but they had a great time. Special thanks to Mrs. Halli and their parents because several parents came to help out. We also had John Halligan today, as I'm sure the high school will be discussing John Halligan. What an amazing man. His son actually committed suicide from intensely being bullied and Mr. Halligan is using that to try to teach kids, you know, the bullies, that how hurtful it is, the kids that are being bullied get hope. And then he addressed the 99% of the bystanders and he said, instead of being bystanders, we need you to be upstanders. So, that's kind of our code word for the rest of the year. We're challenging our kids to be upstanders and to say to their friends who are bullying, hey, that's not right, it hurts people's feelings, you know, of course, in kid terms. So, we're calling our kids for that. So, the best part of our update, while Mr. Rooney mentioned that we are double the size, we actually almost raised double, so we're going to take that. We raised $3,282.48 among middle school kids. It's unprecedented. We are so proud of our kids, our parents. We had $100 bills coming in, several twenties, and I'll tell you, Student Council needs a shout-out for this. John Paul Menhart, Elijah Mountcastle, Emily Rena, Jamie Ritter, Austin Webb, oh, those were, I'm sorry, those were our birdies. Michael Hartman. But our Student Council kids really led the charge with incorporating Spirit Week, they did Thinking of Others Thursday. We had raised so much money by Thursday and then everybody could do a Spirit Week, so great, great things going on in the middle school. Really, really proud of our kids.
Thank you. Could you, excuse me just for a moment? What was your number again?
2,000.
2,000. Well, we were almost 13.
And yours is 1641.
Oh, that was the update at the time. We've gone, we went up to almost 3,300.
Divided by two is still.
Hey.
Travis and I together, we beat Travis, the elementary's beat them.
Whatever, whatever.
We could be swayed as a board though.
Hey. Middle school kids, Mr. Olson, if you remember middle school, give us a break.
High school, gentlemen.
Fortunate to high school, earlier this year, we had Mr. Michael Roy and Mr. Pitts attend the Ohio's Annual Statewide Education Conference, which was devoted to continued progress and sustainability. They spent two days down in Columbus with Mr. Vito, myself, and another teacher, and they brought back a ton of information from that conference. And anytime that you can get teachers out to conferences, I personally feel it's one of the best ways to change attitudes and ideas and bring about best practices in the school. So, we're really grateful that we had that opportunity and it was fully funded through the AP grant. I was able to do that. We just recently received our AP potential results based on the PSAT test that was given earlier this year. The results indicate which students have between a 60 to 100% likelihood of scoring a 3 or higher on the AP exams. You have a breakdown in your handout. I'm not going to go through that breakdown at this time, but I do want to explain to you that it's only a select number of students. It's the students who select to take the AP, the PSAT test, okay? Next year, however, the state is supposed to require everyone in the 10th grade to take the PSAT. So, I'm sure our numbers are going to go up with all of the students taking it. Currently, just those who want to take the test took the test. And it also aligns them up for national merit scholarships, okay? For our waiver day, we had our professional development. You heard that word, DRUND. They were out. The entire staff heard the presentation. We also had a follow-up at our last staff meeting that was Monday. On that waiver day, we also had Lightning Grader, was presented to the high school staff, and then the remainder of the time was devoted to the new Ohio Teacher Evaluation System and Growth Plans. We're currently working on the 2014-15 schedule. Eleven teachers have indicated that they're interested in teaching a zero period, and that's that period from time from 7:15 a.m. to 8 o'clock. It's our desire that we try to pilot this program, at least offer a couple classes next year, and by doing this, it will enable some of our students to take other classes during regular school day, lighten their load. The High School Curriculum Council met on December 5th and we discussed a variety of issues as it relates. issues as it relates to our academics at the high school. And at this time, I passed out some information about our program today, Ryan's story. This was part of our, our high school's effort to deal with bullying. And we had an issue, it was brought to my attention by one of our students, and I should say former students, and as a result of that, we recruited Mr. Halligan to give a presentation today to our entire student body. He relayed his own tragic experience as a dad whose 13-year-old son took his own life in 2003, after being bullied by his peers since the 5th grade, both in school and online. His story is powerful, and reminds students that there is a face, a person, a heart on the other end of their computer screen when they're putting stuff out on the internet. His presentation began with a short video collection of home movie clips and still pictures of his son. He began by telling the story, Ryan's story, and the factors that led up to his son's suicide. We believe that the students gained a perspective from inside a family of a child who was a victim of bullying and cyberbullying. Because of today's program, I'll tell you, yeah, I can't say enough about our students and how proud I am. You could hear, it was so silent in that auditorium, there wasn't a cellphone on, everybody was attentive. There were a lot of wet eyes, not only from students, but from adults, including myself. As the kids left, you could hear a binge drop. They gave him a standing ovation at the conclusion of his presentation, which he never expected. It was phenomenal. A number of students came up to him afterwards, either spoke to him privately, or gave him notes. And ironically, today was his son's, would have been his son's birthday. It was just extremely powerful. We're very fortunate that the program was sponsored by A's Attic, A's Attic, that's a little boutique, that's inside Adama's Jewelry. Actually, the young lady that started the company is the young lady that was bullied, and all the profits from her store went towards education, bully prevention. And the family was there this morning. In addition to that, our student council, Leo's Club, our senior class, the Campfield Police Department, and the Campfield Rotary Club all pitched in and helped defray the cost of the program. It was just, it was amazing, very, very powerful, I can't say enough.
Hi.
Talking about the high school activities, we got a lot of things going on at the high school. We just concluded our craft show, sponsored by the senior class, it was held on December 7th, 2003. The show held over 240 vendor spaces and offered free admission and parking, plus shuttle service from the area lots, 100 students, volunteers from all over the place. Special thanks go to Mr. Holden and Mrs. Reed, they do an outstanding job. I would love to have it noted in the record that this is the first principal's report that was done to musical. We had a Red Cross blood drive to, we had a Red Cross blood drive on December 3rd, kids donated 56 pints of blood. We get two $500 scholarships for doing that, just so that you know, we get two blood drives, we get one in the fall, one in the spring, and we get, again, two $500 scholarships. The organizations who sponsor the blood drive pick basically the person, and we try to look at kids who are needy and maybe don't get a lot of other accolades, but it's worked out very well. That would be NHS and Student Council, I think it would be, so very proud of them. What makes Campfield great, a lot of things, the activities, our choir performed their winter concert on December 5th, the band was December 12th, auditorium is always packed house, best music programs in the state. Our varsity hockey team took part in a rescue missions walk to bring awareness to the homeless in our area, and our hockey coach, Mr. Emery, did a very nice job organizing that, would like to thank all the hockey kids and parents, they do a good job. Campfield Leo's Club, led by President Richie Jenkins, and also, we get a lot of help from Mrs. Reed, who's the sponsor, I get the advisor to that, embraced a new project this year, it's called Operation Giving Tree, to help wounded warriors and their families. When our servicemen and women are recovering from injuries and surgeries, they and their families are boarded in a place called the Fisher House. The Fisher House does not come with a lot of comforts of home, so Operation Giving Tree decided to be beneficial for our servicemen and women and their families to receive gifts to make the Fisher House seem a little more like home during the holidays. We got a wonderful response from one of the ladies whose husband was a wounded warrior, and she contacted our kids on Facebook and just did a great job. But that Leo's Club is an outstanding organization, has a long history of service in Campfield, we'd like to recognize them and thank them. On November 26th, a group of current and former CHS students shaved their heads on the WFMJ Morning Show to raise awareness for cancer. They raised $3,000 through the American Cancer Society, that project was led by Ernie Barquette. I just have a little taken off the top. Other activities at the high school, we participated in Coins for Kids, we also have a huge thing called Toys for Tots, where kids and angel tags, where we really, the kids just bring in, you'll go in our library and you'll see all kinds of lights, and just wonderful, wonderful things. And to wrap it up, this Friday, of course, tradition continues at Campfield High School, our seniors will be putting on our holiday program, Skid, you're all invited to attend. That will be towards the end of the day, I would, two-ish, give or take, okay? Right at the end of the day. The high school would like to, to thank Brian and Adrian again for all their service, got to know you for many, many years here at Campfield. Thank you so much, we really appreciate everything that you did. And I see a friendly face here, Barry, who also, remember from way back by those times, the high school would like to welcome you too, okay? Thank you very much.
Just one question, I heard there might have been some kind of special thing going on at the high school band concert, any truth to that?
Yes.
What was that?
They had a special guest.
Who did?
I think it was a superintendent.
Not that even. Non-superintendent that, it was Burl.
Burl, well, superintendent played part.
Love one. So perhaps we might get a recitation of that after the meeting.
Right.
Sure, that'll be on YouTube.
Sure it will.
Okay, presentation of the minutes, we, as a board, we traditionally send, okay, we put those minutes online.
Maybe the principals, if they want to go.
Let's ask Mr. Tulley, if that's okay.
Yeah.
You want to leave?
Please.
You want to stay?
I definitely leave.
Mr. Tulley has to stay. Oh, he does, okay. Welcome.
I can't punish the rest of them.
Okay. You folks may leave if you'd like. Merry Christmas, it won't happen again.
At least for you.
That's right. Thank you for coming, thank you for sharing all those exciting things. Steve, welcome. Before, before everybody vacates, would you like to finish the second half of your special presentation?
Brian, you missed our opening, but we definitely wanted to recognize you and Adrian, we're eight years on the board. In a small token of our appreciation, wanted to definitely let you know that what you've given the school system, the community, and the kids, graduates, the alums of Campfield Schools, we're losing two quality individuals, we're bringing two quality on, but thank you for your years of service and your dedication and time away from loved ones, and again, all the dedication that you showed in your handout, so.
Appreciate it. It's been my pleasure.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, instead of the presentation of the minutes, the minutes are available online. I would entertain a motion to accept those minutes of the November 20th regular meeting.
Second.
Any questions or comments? We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes. Treasurers' reports, Mrs. Kessler.
You'll notice on the fund balance report on the last page, I wrote in monies that were applied for, for the grants, and at this point, all of that has been received except one of them, it's in process, so these balances will be clearing up there. Does anybody have any questions on the fund balance report? The check payment register, about 10 items down, American Education Corporation for $11,000. This is an annual licensing fee for the Santa Fe Success Center, and this year it was paid for, by donations from Jim Santa Fe years ago, which those funds are almost depleted now as we move forward. I didn't have anything else to point out, unless you have questions? The appropriation report, about 42% of the year has passed, and we have spent and encumbered 43%, so we are on target with our budget at this point, no problems. And the purchase order register, bottom of page nine are the new items you have not seen yet, and nothing unusual, nothing I think that you haven't seen. Any questions? And you'll notice on the investment report, do have a new investment at the bottom there, Fannie Mae, Federal National Mortgage Association, and it is a step-up bond, it is secured by the government, and was able to get pretty good rates as we move forward. It is callable, however, so it may be called in the future, but I believe those rates are good even at this point if it is called, so trying to, as I said, get into some other investments and earn a little bit more money, they are still safe and secure and allowable by law, so. Any questions?
I'll entertain a motion to accept the treasurer's reports.
Still move?
You already asked a question, so let's just go straight to the roll call.
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Any comments that anybody noticed? Do you want to trade? No? Okay. New business, Mr. Jordan?
Thank you. Like to recommend for hire personnel hiring, classified staff, Mark Colat, CBMS afternoon custodian, eight hours per day at $15.50 per hour, effective January 1st, 2014, that's exhibit number one.
Upon the recommendation of superintendent, I'll entertain a motion to hire Mark Colat.
Still move.
Second. Any questions or comments? I'd like to make one, I believe he was an employee of ours that was displaced by the cost reductions.
That's correct.
That's good that he's coming back.
Yes, it's very good.
Great, roll call, please.
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Like to recommend for hire extracurricular, that's your exhibit number three, JV baseball coach, one-half time, Al Thorne, has two-plus years' experience at $2,041. Another JV baseball coach, half the time, Brian Finnegan, $2,041. Three freshman coaches, the first one at .348, Gary Niddle, 1302, that again is two-plus years' experience. Joe Verosco, that's $1,099, at one-year experience or less, and then in .293, Greg Cooper at $897.
Can we take that up to the fourth or fifth place?
That's as best as we're going to do at this point.
Okay. Think you could divide it a little tighter, perhaps?
To the pennies, to make sure everybody's taken care of.
Upon the recommendation of superintendent, I'll entertain a motion to hire the non-licensed extracurricular coaches.
Still move.
Second. Any additional questions, comments?
My only question is, all proper paperwork is done.
Yes, they have, for them to reach this level, it has to be.
That's what you know is asked.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
We do have an addendum this evening, I'd like to go to that this time, I'd like to accept the resignation of a classified employee, Jerry Cope, Hilltop Head Custodian, for the purpose of retirement, effective February 1, 2014, that's your exhibit 7A.
Upon the recommendation of superintendent, I'll entertain a motion to accept the resignation for purposes of retirement of Jerry Cope.
Still move.
Second. Questions or comments?
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
We do have an addendum this evening, I'd like to go to that this time, I'd like to accept the resignation of a classified employee, Jerry Cope, Hilltop Head Custodian, for the purpose of retirement, effective February 1, 2014, that's your exhibit 7B.
Upon the recommendation of superintendent, I'll entertain a motion to accept the resignation for purposes of retirement of Jerry Cope.
Still move.
Second. Questions or comments? Mrs. Kessler.
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Like to publicly thank Jerry for all of his years of service to the district there. Also like to recommend, accept, again, resignation, Amy Whitman, Transportation Aid, effective December 9, 2014, that's your exhibit 7B.
On the recommendation of superintendent, I will ask for a motion to accept the resignation of Amy Whitman as a transportation aide.
Still move.
Second. Questions or comments?
Just, hold on, was she with us?
Amy hasn't been with us that long, but what she is doing is moving from an aide into a bus driver, substitute bus driver. She's taken all the training and will be going for her test here in the next week or so, so she's moving in that direction. She's not going to be leaving the district.
Well, that's, just to make sure of the position.
Logistically, we will hire her as a substitute bus driver when she passes her test.
Correct.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes. Like to recommend the approval of Coke contract, that's your exhibit number four.
Upon the recommendation of superintendent, I will entertain a motion to approve the Coke contract.
Still move.
Second. Okay, any questions or comments? I'd like to make a comment. We had a meeting yesterday morning, Mr. Archer and myself had a meeting with Bill Russell from Canteen, Terry Hatchison, Greg Cooper, Mr. Fry, Mrs. Kessler, and myself were there. We discussed in detail the provisions of this contract. There's been a number of concerns regarding this contract that have been spoken by the booster clubs. Mr. Russell owns Canteen Services, and he's a community member, and he provided us with a great deal of information regarding the things that we get for this contract, and to replace this contract if we were to purchase certain refrigerated units and that, the approximate cost. I am going- Mr. Russell owns Canteen Services and he's a community member and he provided us with a great deal of information regarding the things that we get for this contract and to replace this contract if we were to purchase certain refrigerated units and that the approximate cost. I am going to recommend that we approve this contract at this point. However, Mr. Archer has stated in an email to us that we have the opportunity to withdraw in the future, as does Coke, if either party notifies the other 60 days before the end of a contract year, a single contract year. This is a five-year agreement. We'll most likely pursue these discussions with regard to the booster clubs after the first of the year. I'm still not satisfied this is the best deal for us, but at this point, I don't think we have a choice but to do this because if we did, they would remove everything with great speed and I feel that that would put some of our booster clubs in a difficult spot. So that said, Mr. Archer.
I'd just like to point out, too, that someone that was with us did say that this was a pretty good deal for us. It really was. We talked about the vending prices and we talked about all that we're getting and the cost that's going out to the boosters for the product. It's a good deal. He could not come up with a deal as sweet as what we have.
That's true. And I think that involving the booster club presidents, anybody who deals with concessions and putting this out to them and letting them have a say-so in this, I think is very important. The problem is not with the carbonated beverages. The problem is with the water that we buy at the same price as the carbonated beverages. And I think that is where Coke makes quite a lot of the profit.
The water is not at the same price. It is at a lower price, but it's still more than you could go to Sam's Club and buy the 40-pack for $3.95 or whatever it is.
And I think, honestly, you and I can agree to disagree on this at the moment, but it was your recommendations to accept this. I agree. At the moment, I would like to continue the research as we go forward. Any other questions or comments?
I just want to, if we did this, would that go under the facilities committees? Or would it be better to do it independently with the boosters?
I think it's probably independent would be better.
Yeah. I also like to see that and let them study it and come up with a proposal that is beneficial to them, but also beneficial to us as far as that scholarship, still giving scholarships and things like that. And I'd like to see that same thing and let them stew it over and talk about it and give a recommendation to the board and superintendent.
Could we all concern the water at this point? Or is it having by their product, period?
There's multiple concerns, one of which is Gatorade, which happens to be a Pepsi product.
It's always been, whether it's Pepsi or Coke, that has always been, whether it's Ohio State University or Kansas City Local or Notre Dame.
I think.
They have these contracts and that is the give and take of any contract.
Yeah, what I'd like to do is let them, we're in a difficult spot right now because we should have accepted this, you know, months ago. But I would like them to have an input in it as we move forward, you know, to each point. If there's going to be a point at 10 months, then I would like their input as to whether they feel they can provide a better situation than we're getting now, based on all of the ramifications of the contract.
You know, there's a huge, there would be a huge equipment outlay if we did not go with a provider that provides those.
However, it's my feeling that maybe at the schools where we currently have a vending machine, we could put a refrigerator in place and let people bring their own at a much less expense than providing the vending machines.
And we talked about that.
No, they just, you put a refrigerator and they bring their own.
As far as the kids.
One other thing is I think the boosters need to see that. You know, these boosters that are upset with the price, I think they need to see the outlay. I think they need to see all the facts and what's going to cost everybody. I mean, all together, everybody.
There needs to be cost.
And if they, if they get that knowledge, they may not be so excited about putting forth the money to help purchase the equipment. So that's what I'm thinking.
I'm going to say that louder than I said it this end of the table.
I'm sorry.
Regardless of what's, no, I'm sorry. I had said something to Patty. Regardless of what's decided, I hope that this board and this administration going forward will do a cost analysis before making a decision based on wishes.
Oh, no, that's.
Yeah, it's always going to be based on what is going to be best, I think, for the district and the whole. At the end of the day, the cost analysis should certainly be a part of that.
I just think it's important that they're enlightened.
And I believe that's why we are accepting, you know, why we're proposing this tonight. This is the best deal going. And Mr. Archer, you might comment quickly on the difference between Pepsi and Coke and why Coke is on the table.
One of the large differences in the proposal that Pepsi gave us and the difference between the two of them was the yearly amount that Coke was giving us for scholarships. Pepsi said, we'll give you $3,000 upfront and that's it. Coke said, we'll give you $3,000 every year for the five years. So you're talking the difference of 3,000 and 15,000 that we have traditionally used for at least part of that, for scholarships for our students. That was, that was pretty big. Takes a lot of water sales to make up that much money in the long run. And that's something that the boosters would not know.
Correct. And that's what they, that's why if we have this and they're informed of this, then all of a sudden, there's an attitude adjustment about the whole thing because it's not so much, I'm looking at the thing from this angle.
Right.
Just me. Now I have to share with the whole thing and we have to have something that's equal to that. So what are you willing to contribute?
Are you willing to contribute up to $15,000?
What I'm saying to you is what are you willing to contribute? And let them see if they can work out a way to do it.
And I have noticed that most of the concerns that have been brought to my attention is this concern, this concern, and this concern. Not this concern. So I think at least sharing the information after the first of the year will be good. When would the effective date of this be? Will this be backdated?
September 1.
September, the way they go.
Okay.
All right.
Yes.
Any other questions?
So if we do accept this, you know.
We're halfway in.
Right.
Well, not halfway. We've got five years. That's a fucking country. But if, you know, you talk about backing out at some point, if it doesn't work, I mean, there's, that should be part of that cost analysis.
And that, that date would be June 30, that we would have to address a letter. So I think we do have some work to do between now and June 30, particularly in the cost analysis, so that it can be presented properly. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Kestner?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
And this, this is a program to assist in, with special needs students in transitioning them into the workforce, these youngsters, and it is an ESC program. And that's what this contract will, will be able to follow through with.
And what specifically will they be doing? Can you give an example?
Assisting youngsters, again, with special needs, trying to transition them into the workforce.
And they're doing this.
Training them.
They're doing this now at the educational, or this is the JBS, right?
This is for, no, no. It's the Educational Service Center for our youngsters here in our district. I, I work for the VRP3 with adults.
Currently?
Yes. So I should have seen.
Do you have any comments about it?
It's a great, great project. We're getting adults with, I would say, checkered paths and problems and also behavioral problems as well as psychological problems back into the, sorry, back into the workforce.
I asked him a question to explain it. It's my last meeting, too. Okay, Mrs. Kestner.
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Kestner?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
I'd like to appoint President Pro Tem for the organizational.
Okay, Mrs. Stern, since this is your last meeting, you're more than welcome to help me with this.
You need to ask for nominations from the floor.
And this President Pro Tem is for the next meeting.
The organizational meeting.
On January 2nd. Okay? I will ask for nominations from the floor for somebody to be the President Pro Tem for the organizational meeting, currently scheduled for January 2nd at 9:30 a.m.
I will nominate Mr. Olson.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Kestner?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
And I accept gladly that position. Thank you.
I'd like to recommend the approval of membership of OSBA for 2014.
So moved.
Any questions or comments?
What's that cost us?
It used to be, based on enrollment, about $3,000 a year.
I think Mrs. Stern would be a shining example of the success that, you know, we could get by participating in that, especially with your additional involvement.
OSBA provides a great service. It really does the school districts as much more available than I think most districts take advantage of. They have many great services that can be utilized and certainly just the advice and the guidance and, and the board leadership. Of course, what you can take there is very beneficial for any board member or administrator to attend.
Wonderful professional development, aren't you?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Kestner?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend the acceptance of the donations at your exhibit number six totaling $2,105.
So moved.
Second. Any additional or any questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Kestner?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Archer?
In the place of my report tonight, I just want to, again, thank Adrian and Brian for their leadership over the years that they've been here and I've been here. It's been a pleasure to work with, with both of you and we will miss you certainly and your leadership through the, some trying times that we had. And you stepped up and you performed your duties well and we appreciate all the time and effort that you put into making Kentville Schools a great place for students to learn. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Archer. Likewise, it has truly been a privilege to work with all of you and to our privilege at least mine and benefit. It's been a growing experience and.
Do you still have any substitute bus drivers?
Yeah. It's just a thought.
When I may would replace some of these 60 hours we currently work in, I might look into that.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
I'd like to just highlight a couple of things that are, that are going to be happening here over break. Because of the passage of the levy, we'd like to move forward in our technology upgrades. We're going to start meeting on technology and we're going to have CDW, which is a firm that we use for, for some technology. We're going to be going over Chromebooks and we're, we're looking at Chromebooks to see if that's going to be our option or what our best option is, looking at one-to-one devices for our students. And when we say students, we're not only talking about ninth through 12th grade, we're looking at middle school age youngsters as well. So Chromebooks, we're going to be looking at those over the break. Straight A grants, as I'm sure you've heard, we made it through the first stage, the final round, we were denied, only 25 grants were given out. And I don't mind saying this, 30% of the grant package were given to two different grants. So $30 million were given to two different grants. Half of that, 15%, was given to the Superintendent of Schools, Public Education's Ex-School System in Reynoldsburg. So that's going to be a phone call we'll be able to make tomorrow and it's only question have to question that. We are in the process of evaluating the response from the state. We have a response today at 4 o'clock. We are going to do that in individual buildings. What's nice about that is, is we're going to see the evaluation and be able to resubmit next year. And if it's, if it looks like what we skimmed right now, there's not a whole lot of change that will need to be done, but we'll see exactly how the state, the mindset is there. The third grade OAA scores, there's a lot of conversation going on in the county and the way the results are. And if you saw an article in the paper, the results were lower than, than they were last year. Our numbers did drop a couple ticks, but not nearly the amount of a lot of other districts. What we have to notice is, and I have to understand, that this is a third grade assessment given to young third graders only two months into school year. This is an end-of-the-year third grade test. We still had over 70% of our third graders pass. Interventions are going to be taking place. We're very confident our staff will get those numbers up to well into the 90s like they were.
What are they expecting of that? I mean, it's just logic. I, I don't understand the lack of logic that's used that asks for third graders to take tests.
I think, I think what they're looking at is it's the first time that these kiddos are given that type of an assessment. And they don't, and if we're looking at the third grade guarantee and expect them to take an assessment for the first time in the spring and have that large of a, of an impact on them, maybe give it to them in the fall.
Is that what they're going to try to give a taste of at first?
Some of them, some of them. But what we have done is give them, give second graders an assessment similar, first graders. So we're combating that first time at an earlier age.
Does that, will that be given again at the end of third grade or not?
It is. It's in the spring.
So it's the same kind of test?
Exactly. Exactly.
So they're looking for a year's progress?
They're looking, no, they're looking to see and make sure that youngsters are at an end-of-the-third grade level. Now, what will happen, we have 70-plus percent of our kids that passed it. They will then take it again. You can increase your scores, you cannot decrease. So if a youngster receives a passing grade and gets a better score in the spring, they'll take that better score. If they don't do as well, we didn't have any student do poorer in the spring last year than they did in the fall. Very seldom will you see that happen. But if for ever, whatever reason, that does take place, they'll take the larger of the two scores.
Is the third grade reading guarantee tied to this?
It is. It is. So those, those are being evaluated. The one area that, that's very interesting when you're looking at and you're trying to evaluate this, this information, you have different levels and we have accelerated and we have advanced. We have more students at the higher range this year than we did last year, but we had more youngsters at the lower range than we did last year. So we need to really work on it. As we talked about this before, working at either ends of the spectrum, not just as average students. So we're, we're going to have to address that. And our new English Language Arts Initiative that's going on in the district, that'll affect these youngsters, no matter what level that they're on, that balanced literacy and that and framework.
And that, does that, do you incorporate high school into that language arts initiative?
It, it's not. It's a K, it's normally a K6. We're going to stretch it into K8.
Any other?
That's it at this point, thanks.
I just have a question. Is the technology committee going to be involved at all in the?
We are definitely going to get you folks involved. Thousand times.
Not necessarily me.
The technology committee?
The technology committee.